Okay. Time is 5:07 and we're reconvening the special meeting of 5:05 PM. At this point, the, I'm gonna, the purpose of today's meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2024-2025 tentative millage rates and the 2024-2025 tentative budget. At this time, I request that all cellular phones be put in silent mode. I'd also like to take this opportunity to remind the members of public of district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Today's agenda includes presentation on the percent of increase over rollback rate, proposed millage, budget overview, proposed fiscal year 2025 tentative budget, public hearing on the proposed millage rates and tentative budget, adoption of the required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, resolution determining revenues and millages, and resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2024-2025, fiscal year 2025 tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget, acceptance of the 2024 certification of taxable value, as well as the scheduling of the final budget public hearing. So then we will also have comments from board members, board attorney, and superintendent. So at this point, board members, is there a motion to adopt the agendas presented? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay. And do we have a second? Okay. Motion moved by Mr. Persons and seconded by Ms. Jordan. Please record your vote.
Ms. Gibbonelli?
Gotcha.
Motion passes six-zero. I'd also like to just real quick ask the Sergeant Arms if the lobby has been cleared. Thank you. Okay. I want to make sure. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Savage.
Thank you, Chairman. Just at this point, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Amy Desmore, as well as our Director of Budget, Ms. Kelly Letcher. Thank you very much today for presenting our tentative budget.
Okay. Absolutely. And good afternoon or good evening, Dr. Savage, Chair Fisher, and members of the board. This is the first of two public hearings required under Florida statutes to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent submitted his tentative budget to you on July 23rd. This hearing was advertised in the news press on July 26th, as per statute. The second and final budget public hearing by your approval will be held on Thursday, September 5th, here in this room. And the notice of that meeting to the public will be through a direct mailing to the property appraiser's off, from the property appraiser's office. That mail document is known as the truth in millage notice, or the TRIM notice, and is sent as required by law. So I will now turn the presentation over to Mrs. Kelly Letcher, who will take us through the specifics of the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2025.
Good evening. So as outlined by TRIM requirements, we must first discuss the millage rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage which, when applied to the current year's tax roll, net of adjustments for growth, would produce the same dollars as received in the previous year. The calculated rollback rate is 5.1549. The proposed millage rate for 2425 is 5.286 mils. That's a decrease of 1.144 mils from the 2324 millage rate of 5.430. This is an increase over the rollback rate of 2.54%. And this new millage rate will generate $58 million more than in the previous year because of the increase in the tax roll. The history of our millage rate is up on the screen. We have, our current tax roll is at $160 billion, which is a 10.61% increase over the previous years of $145 billion. So our millage, this year, our required local effort mils is 3.038. That includes the prior period adjustment as well. Our discretionary mils is .748, and our capital mils is 1.5, for a total millage for this year of 5.286, which again is a decrease of .144 over last year's millage rate. The millage rates, as we've discussed before, the required local effort, and as the tax roll goes up, our millage rates drop. And this is a representation of our millage rate over the last 10 or so years. And then as you can see, this is the representation, as our tax roll goes up, you can see the line where the millage rates are going down. Again, the taxable value this year is $160 billion, which again is a 10.61% increase over last year's. So what effect does this have on our taxpayers? Our taxpayers, if they had $100,000 home with a 10.61% increase, their new value would be $110,610. At last year's rate and value, they would have paid $543. And this year, they're going to pay $584.68, so an increase of $41.68. If they had a $200,000 home, their home value would have increased to $221,220. So last year, under the old rate and the old value, they would have been paying $1,086. This year, they'll be paying $1,169.37, so they would see an increase of $83.37. Under the bottom scenarios, where it's only a 3% increase, those are for homeowners that have the Save Our Homes on their home, which only allows their value to increase no more than 3% a year. So when you take that in the homestead exemption, someone who had a $200,000 home last year would be valued at $206,000. So the old rate, they would have been paying $950.25. The new rate is $956.77, so they would be paying $6.52 more. So again, our required local effort, that is 3.026 is our required local effort with a prior period adjustment of .012, which brings us to the 3.038 millage rate, which will generate us $468,025,885. Basic discretionary of .748 will generate $115,234,813. And our capital outlay millage of 1.5 will generate $231,85,855, for a total millage of 5.286. And the amount to be raised is $814,346,553. Our total tentative budget is $2.7 billion. The two biggest parts of that is the general fund and the capital. The general fund makes up 44% of that, at $1.2 billion, capital at 40%, and $1 billion. And then we have our other funds, which are the internal service funds at $209 million, special revenue for food service at $69 million, special revenue for grants at $60 million, and debt service at $100 million. So mainly for the public's benefit to understand the parts of the budget, the budget has six parts of the budget. So the general fund is the biggest fund, and the one that is used for our daily day-to-day operations. That's the one that is used to fund the majority of our staff, our teachers, and every kind of operating expense that happens. Then we have our debt service, which pays the debt, or certificates of participation. It pays that for all of our buildings that we build. Capital is used to build new schools, buy equipment, and provide maintenance services. Food service supports breakfast and lunch programs for all of our students. And the special revenue federal funds are used specifically for the purposes that are stated in the grants that are received for that. And then our internal service accounts are for all of our insurance costs, both our health and our property. So the general fund is our major source of revenue for the district. It's budgeted at $1.2 billion. It's 44% of our budget, and it supports over 100,000 students. The general fund provides resources to our classrooms, reading initiatives at their elementary schools. We're continuing an additional 30 minutes at some of our select elementary schools. We are focusing on the whole child with this budget, on mental wellness for English learners, any of our students who require additional interventions and support. We are also focusing on employee retention. So I'm just going to touch, we've had many meetings on the Florida Education Finance Program, but we have received the second calculation, and that's what this budget is built off of. In the second calculation, we had an increase of $993 million over last year's fourth calculation. $63 million of that, however, will be going to the Family Empowerment Scholarship, and I'm sorry, that's not a 993 million increase, that's the total budget. When you take out the $63 million, Lee County's budget from the FEFP's 930 million, that's a $67 million increase. The 993 million over last year's is a $67 million increase. 6.8 million of that has to go directly for our teacher's salary increase, based on the salary increase allocation. Even though, as you know, they took that out as a categorical, they still have a statutory amount that you have to apply for teacher's salary increases. The new dollars are generating $9,241 per FTE, which is a $266 increase over last year's amount of $8,975. The base student allocation increased to $5,330.98, which is a $191.25 increase over last year's $5,139. 41.5% of the budget is funded from the state, and the remaining 58.5% is from our local So in the general fund, there's 62.4% of that is from local funds that are generated, 37% from state funds, and 47, or .47% from federal. So where do those dollars go? 70% of the dollars that we generate goes directly to school expenses for the instruction of our students. We have, I'm sorry, 8% in contingency and reserves. We have 4% in support services, 12% in operations and maintenance, and 5% in student transportation. And then there's a little 1% in the other category, which is basically our fee-based programs at the schools. So when we have a budget of our size, you must keep money back in contingency and reserves in case something comes up, and we don't want to touch the schools and affect them in any way. So we set reserves aside in order to protect our schools. We are required to set a 3% contingency aside, and for this year, that's at $29.5 million. We also set aside some money for future reductions and needs. Every calculation is different. We never know what's going to come. Our second calculation already has an $805,000 proration on it, so we automatically would take that out of those reserves rather than going back and touching schools. We also have some money, as we know things are coming up, student population, you know, grows throughout the year. We want to make sure we have money to keep our schools funded the way they should be. We currently have $87.5 million sitting in reserve for contingency, for purchase orders that have to carry over from '24 into '25, and for balances that have to carry over that need to go back into the areas of where they were before. Switching on to our next fund is food service. It's currently budgeted at $70 million. It's 2% of our total budget. It includes breakfast and lunch for every child at no cost to the parents. We currently are part of the Community Eligibility Program in FY25. We are watching this very closely to make sure that our revenues stay up and making sure that we can continue that program all year. Special revenue is the grants that we receive from the federal government. We have Title I, and IDA, and other grants in there. It's set at $60.5 million right now. That will continue to grow as we get new money in for all of the grants. It's 2% of our current budget right now. Our capital funds are set at $1 billion, or 40% of our budget. It is mainly funded through local property tax and sales tax. The major focus of our capital funds is for safety and security upgrades, maintenance renovations of existing buildings, and technology. Currently in the five-year capital plan, we have funding for three new elementary schools, one new middle school, two new high schools, one pre-K to eight, one addition, two rebuilds, two remodels, and some additions at the technical centers. Our debt service is at $100.3 million, which is 4% of our budget. We have a statutory debt amount that we cannot go past, and that is 75% of our 1.5-mil dollars. We are currently at 19.3% of that statutory amount. The board has a recommended debt amount of 50% of the 1.5 mils, and we're currently at 28.9% of that. And this is just for our debt that's paid from, the 1.5 mils does not include debt that's paid from sales tax.
All right. So that is the overview, and thank you so much, Mrs. Letcher, of our proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year '25. That budget is comprehensive, yes, and supports 120 schools and over 100,000 students this year. So that is a real banner for us, over 100,000 students. And so as our chair mentioned earlier, our mission, of course, is to ensure each child reaches his or her highest, fullest personal potential. And we respectfully submit this budget in support of that mission, in support of the vision of the school district of Lee County, and in support of the students and employees of our school district, as well as our citizens. So at this point, we will turn the conversation over to the superintendent and chair to continue with tonight's actions and public hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Desmore, and thank you, Ms. Letcher. At this point, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We will now recess the special school board meeting and open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the tentative proposed millage rates and the tentative budget for 2024-2025. The time is 5:24 PM. And Dr. Savage, please continue by stating your recommendations. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Chairman. Recommendation one, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 3.038 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $468,025,885. The required local effort millage includes basic required local effort of 3.026 mils and a prior period adjustment millage of .012. Recommendation two, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $115,234,813. Recommendation three, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.500 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $231,855,855. The total millage will equal 5.286 mils, with a total amount to be raised of $814,346,553. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of 2.54%. Recommendation four, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt a resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2024-2025. Recommendation five, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution, adopting the tentative budget for the 2024-2025 school year as follows. One, the general operating budget in the amount of $1,225,197,933. Item two, the special revenue budget in the amount of $130,525,484. Line three, the debt service budget in the amount of $100,371,264. The capital outlay budget in the amount of $1,999,951,836. The internal service budget in the amount of $209,410,488, for a total tentative budget Recommendation six, I recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2024 Certificate of Taxable Value for Lee County Form DR 420-S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form. And finally, recommendation seven, I recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2024-2025 millage levies and final budget for the '24-25 school year for Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. At this point, I'm going to ask any members of the public who are invited to speak on these matters for the seven resolutions which is discussed. The time allotted for public speakers will be three minutes a person. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address said recommendations? Please approach the podium, sir.
Robert Daniels. I would definitely be in support of the recommendations with a couple of amendments. During the time I've been in Lee County, we have acquired 200, sorry, 20,000 students, and we have lost 500 teachers. That 20,000 students represents $185 million in FTE each year. For less than a third of that, you could give each of your instructional, non-administrative staff a flat $10,000 raise. That means your starting salary for teachers would go beyond Collier, beyond Charlotte, beyond being competitive, to be in an incentive values in $60,500 a year to start. If you don't think it's needed, I wanted to point to our current openings. We currently have three assistant principal positions open in the entire county, therefore elementary school assistant principals. Those positions start at 77 and a half. In contrast, you have 190 instructional elementary school positions open. That's enough positions to fully staff three to four elementary schools. That's roughly at 20 kids per unit. 3,800 elementary school students that don't have a teacher yet, and we're a week from the start of the school year. We have 328 instructional positions across the entire county, not yet filled, as of 4 o'clock this morning, still being advertised. Low bond is extremely at 25 students per unit. That's 8,200, roughly 8% of your student body that doesn't have a teacher in that classroom. The only way to fix this is to throw money at it. It's the only problem in education you can fix by throwing money at it. It's about supply and demand, and I've said before, you've had a supply side shift. That means the price has to change per unit. It has to go up. Thank you. And just for the record, this represents less than 2% of the general fund.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to make comment? Okay. Seeing none, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and reconvene the special board meeting of July 30th, 2024. The time is 5:31 PM. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Savage, please restate your recommendations individually, allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving on to the next one.
Yes, Chairman. Recommendation one, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 3.038 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $468,025,885. The required local effort millage includes a basic required local effort of 3.026 mils and a prior period adjustment millage of .012.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve said recommendation? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation on this, number one.
Is there a second? Mr. Persons?
I second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Persons. Discussion. Anyone have any discussion?
I had a question, but I'm not really sure where it fits into. It was a comment that Ms. Letcher had said, the food service budget for 70 million, and that you're watching it, what, does this, what we're voting on right now, what effect would that or could that have on the district for us voting this? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so.
So we said 70 million right now.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And this is what we have in the tentative budget right now, based on all information that we have and all estimates that we have made. If something happens later on and something changes that, then that would come to the board in an amendment of the budget to the board, in which, of course, you would approve as well.
Okay. So right now, we're looking at it as we have this, and we're taking care of all the kids.
Exactly.
Okay.
Am I answering your question?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, at this point, please record your vote. Ms. Morgan?
Yes. I just, sorry.
Motion passes six-zero. Now moving on to recommendation number two, Dr. Savage.
Yes, Chairman. Recommendation two, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $115,234,813.
Board members, do we have a motion? Ms. Jordan?
I move that we take the recommendation of the superintendent for the Lee County School Board to adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Persons?
I second the motion.
Moved by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Persons. Do we have any discussion from the dais? Okay. Seeing none, please record your votes. Motion carries six-zero. Dr. Savage, please proceed with recommendation number three.
Yes, sir. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.500 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $231,855,855. The total millage will equal 5.286 mils, with a total amount to be raised of $814,346,553. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of 2.54%.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
A motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for capital outlay millage.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Langford Fleming. Do we have any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carries six-zero. Please proceed to recommendation number four, Dr. Savage.
Yes, Chairman. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Board, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Jordan?
I move to recommend the superintendent's recommendation for the Lee County School Board to adopt the resolution determining revenues and millage levied.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Persson's?
I second the motion.
Moved by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Persson's. Do we have any discussion on the dais? Motion carries six-zero. Dr. Savage, please proceed with recommendation number five.
Yes, sir. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2024-2025 school year as follows. The general operating in the amount of one billion, two hundred and twenty-five million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. The special revenue budget in the amount of one hundred and thirty million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. The debt service budget in the amount of one hundred million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. The capital outlay budget in the amount of one billion, ninety-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. The internal service budget in the amount of two hundred and nine million, four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, for a total tentative budget of two billion, seven hundred and sixty-five million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Is there a motion to approve recommendation number five, board? Ms. Langford Fleming?
I move that we approve the recommended Lee County School Board adopted tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for 24-25 school year as was stated by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Langford Fleming, seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Do we have a discussion on the dais? Go ahead.
So, question for you both. In the general fund, the sixty-seven million for salaries, is, does that include the six point eight percent increase in that amount, or is that in addition to what the, what the governor allocated? So, you know what I'm saying? Do you, is that, am I saying the question clearly?
Is your question, does the sixty-seven million dollar increase, or?
Include that six point eight percent?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
The amount for the teacher salary increase, it is part of that.
Right. So now, is this increase for 2024 to 25 year, or is that, that, that's just for the future? So, we haven't allocated or given raises for that amount, right? But that was what the governor?
We have for teachers, yes.
When he raised the salary, right? So that's for that, like, when he raised the salary in July, for the July budget that they did in Tallahassee, right?
Well, for teachers, we already negotiated that amount, though, in, in this current fiscal year, for fiscal year 2025.
And this is part of that, though.
And that is part of that.
That's what I thought. So that's what I wanted to be real clear. So, any future additional raises will be in next year's budget, and so we're kind of, we kind of do the cart before the horse. We, we bargain before we know how much we really are going to have, right, basically?
Well, not, no, usually, usually we'll have an indication of what we will have.
Yes.
In this particular case, for this year, if I remember correctly, we had the early legislative session, so we did know when we went, when we completed bargaining, right, for, for this current year. But there are some times where it may not be completed yet at the time, but we do have some indication or estimation.
Right, because I know in the past, sometimes we did, we did not know.
Yeah.
So you're kind of, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, yeah. So if we wanted to, you know, put more money towards that, that's another conversation. That doesn't happen now? Towards salaries?
Well, no, it wouldn't typically happen now, it typically happen in our process where we have bargaining or negotiations with our unions and executive sessions with our board related to funding opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Please record your vote for recommendation number five. Motion carries six-zero. Dr. Savage, please state recommendation number six.
Yes, Chairman. I recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2024 Certification of Taxable Value for Lee County Form DR four twenty S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form.
Is there a motion for recommendation number six? Ms. Jordan?
I make a motion to, for the superintendent's recommendation for the Lee County School Board to accept the 2024 Certificate of Taxable Value for Lee County Form. DR four two zero S, I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses. I have them on my hand. That's my motion. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, thank you.
Moved by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Do we have any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carries six-zero. And last but not least, recommendation seven, could you please state that recommendation, Dr. Savage?
Yes, Chairman. I recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2024-2025 millage levies and final budget for the 2024-2025 school year for Thursday, September fifth, 2024, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Do we have a motion to approve recommendation number seven? Ms. Langford Fleming?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent that the Lee County School Board scheduled public hearing on the final 24-25 millage levies and final budget for the 24-25 school year for Thursday, September fifth, 2024.
Do we have a second? Ms. Jordan? Moved by Ms. Langford Fleming, seconded by Ms. Jordan. Is there any discussion? Motion carries six-zero. For recommendation number seven, we're now going to move on the board comment. For purposes of time, I'm going to ask Unvanke if anyone up here wishes to make a comment. Anyone? Okay. At this point, having no other business come before this body and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you at the six o'clock action meeting, and the time is 5:44 PM. Thank you.